It's time to call this meeting of the North Little Rock City Council to order.
Turn your mic off.
Just about getting our, all of our alderpersons in place.
Turn your mic off.
Turn your mic off.
It's on. It says green. Shows green. Okay. Kirk Whitby, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir Ross.
Here.
White is absent. Taylor is absent. Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Height?
Here.
And Witcher is absent. Aquorum is present, sir.
Thank you. All stands for the prayer to be led by, and pledge led to be by Alderman White, no, excuse me, Alderman Robinson, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Spout your heads. Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for another opportunity to take care of the business on behalf of the residents of North Little Rock. I ask that you be with us in this meeting and that you lead and guide us even in our decision making. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Motion concerning the minutes?
So move.
Second.
On the minutes from the previous meeting, Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Okay, we've got four communications. Anybody want any of those four pulled?
We need to read number three.
Number three.
Number three.
Is that the only one?
Have a motion for?
Accept one, two, and four.
So move. Second.
Second. Question?
One, two, and four. Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Number three?
Number three. Please read that one.
A letter dated June 26, 2017 to Ms. Whitby and members of the city council. Dear Ms. Whitby and city council members, this is to advise that I am attending the U.S. Conference of Mayors, June 23 through 26, 2017. Alderman Charlie Height will be presiding over the city council meeting in my absence. Sincerely, Joe A. Smith, Mayor.
Move to accept and file.
Second.
On the motion, Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you ready for the special call?
Special call. Please call it.
This is an email dated Friday, June 23, 2017, from City Attorney Carter. Honorable Members of the North Little Rock City Council, the purpose of this email is to advise you that Mayor Smith has called a special meeting of the North Little Rock City Council at 6:05 PM on Monday, June 26, 2017, at City Hall Council Chambers, North Little Rock, Arkansas. The following will be on the agenda. O-1754 waiving formal bidding requirements for additional work needed on the storm drain replacement project on Glenmere Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, appropriating funds sponsored by Mayor Smith and Alderman Ross. I've also included copies of two Exhibit A documents for attachments to Resolutions 17-104 and R-17-105 in the pursuit to Section 2-482 of the North Little Rock Municipal Code. It was sent to all members and all members have responded. Are you ready for the special call?
Please.
Yes, please read it.
O-1754 is an ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for additional work needed on the storm drain replacement project on Glenmere Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, appropriating funds. First reading.
Now, since we only have five of us here tonight, Mr. Carter, it's my understanding that we have a special voice vote that's going to be required because of special circumstances concerning this piece of legislation. Is that correct?
You can, you can call a voice vote if you want to. You can express whatever opinion that you'd like to express. You need to know that, you know, a voice vote or an expression that you might have during this meeting, while it's perfectly appropriate, that does not adopt an ordinance, right? So it's the authority to appropriate funds, or more specifically, because funds can be appropriated by resolution, but the, the authority to waive bidding requires an ordinance. It requires, you know, the reading process or waiving of that. And then typically, you know, we often have emergency clauses, especially with things like this, that are presented as, as an emergency measure, but that would not be able to be voted on by the city council either. So you can generally express your will and, and discuss your thoughts about this ordinance, but you cannot bring it to a vote. You've read it one time and with the number of participants that you have at city council right now, that's the only, those are the only actions you can take.
So that would require a motion by one of the council members to do a voice vote rather than, rather than a normal vote?
You, you can do that, whatever is the will of the council.
Alderman Ross?
I do want a voice vote, but I also want Chris Wilburn, the city engineer, to come explain what we're voice voting on and the reason why we're voice voting. This is mine and the mayor's legislation, and so I want him to kind of explain the situation that we're in right now. This is a true emergency.
Mr. Wilburn?
Basically, what's happened is we had a, we have a drainage project at Glenmere at the end where it ties into Fairway. The original project involved replacing a 40 by 30 inch corrugated metal pipe over three properties. In the process of starting that project, and that was previously approved by council, in starting that project, we had discovered an additional drainage pipe, which is even a larger pipe, a 60 by 48 CMP that is in, it runs parallel to this other one, and it's in even worse shape than the one that we're replacing. A portion of that pipe has collapsed, and I would say it's running about 20% efficient right now. And we've also in exploring, we've found numerous sinkholes along this line, so we're needing to add that to the project. These pipes are so close to each other that they actually need to be replaced concurrently.
Are we going to have to go under Fairway?
I'm not 100% sure, but the collapsed piece, we believe is not quite underneath Fairway. So for this project, I would not, I'm hoping to avoid that. The pipe's not great under Fairway, but it's operating and it's clear. And so we're trying to avoid that.
It's my knowledge, and Alderman Ross can correct me if I'm wrong, but with the contractor already being up there, if we pulled him off of the job, then approved the appropriation of funds, and then he goes back, it's going to cost us even more than it's costing us presently. Is that correct?
The delay, it's not what I would recommend.
Okay, alright.
One thing, and if you drive down Fairway, you can see it's right there by Lakewood Elementary. I mean, they've already dug up the backyards. I mean, how deep would you say that they have dug down in the, these yards now and we're just like, you know, holding our breath every time it rains that the rain doesn't come through there? I know they tried to-
We've got protected. It handled the last rain just fine, but four feet over three properties.
It's just open ditch in these people's backyards that if we leave this until the next council meeting, we don't know what could happen.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Then it would be, I guess I, do I make a motion, Mr. Carter, to do a voice vote on this to appropriate funds in lieu of legislation?
Well, we have legislation.
Or just, do I call for a voice vote?
Well, and I think all you'd have to do is, if some, it could be you, it could be anyone in city council, if you wanted to ask if they, if you support the project, then you could ask, call that for a voice vote.
Individually, individually, or?
It, it doesn't matter how you do it. It's just an expression of intent.
Well, I'll just do this then. Do you have a question, Alderman Ross?
I just want to say that this is, this is not the approval. It's just that-
Right.
As the city, the street department, city engineers, we're afraid to go forward not with some kind of assurance that, you know, that you are, you know, that we will have a positive vote on the June the 10th, I mean, July the 10th council meeting, but we need to move forward rather than just-
It's an approval to keep working.
It's approval to keep working, and that it is your intent to vote for this at the June, July the 10th meeting.
Okay. Aye. Let's go.
So I'll call the voice vote as my legislation. So everybody in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
Anybody?
Ayes have it.
No.
So that was sufficient for a motion?
Yes.
And a second for the voice vote?
That's fine. It's just, just, it's just something that needs to be recorded in the minutes.
Alright.
A resolution or an ordinance.
Okay.
Recorded in the minutes.
Alright.
Alright, that's it.
Now, you are about to schedule public hearings now.
No, no, yeah, the public hearing that I'm aware of involves O-1747. So I convened a public hearing on the adopting the general service rules and regulations for the North Little Rock Electric Department. Anyone here want to speak on the rules and regulations for the North Little Rock Electric Department?
Did Mr. Ard sign up for that?
Mr. Ard, did you sign up for that?
I believe you did.
I believe you did.
I think we've got a-
Don't look at your job, Mayor.
We have a prepared presentation to you.
Okay.
You want to do that first, or what?
Uh, Mr. Ard, since you're already there, you, you've got three minutes.
I have no quarrels with what's going down. I just have, like to have one request. They are now turning on electricity and turning it off remotely. They're not coming out to your house wasting gasoline, wasting man hours, and costing money. They're sitting there, I'd say less than 30 seconds, they can turn it on or turn it off. I like that nod. All I ask is make it a little cheaper, because some of these older people that get their electricity turned off every month. That's going to get expensive. We've got to look out for these older folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ard. Okay. Mr. Bryant?
We have put together just a short, I think six, five or six slide presentation. We're just going to hit the highlights really of how it affects the customer. I have Ms. Ponder here with me also, if you want to get into some of the weeds on this new writing of these rules and regulations. She, Kathy Stevens from UAD, Karen Scott, David Melton, did a great job researching the processes and writing the new processes for this. We even threw Mr. Carter into the pot to make sure everything was legalized when this was written. Basically, we're doing away with two or three ordinances, previous ordinances, some internal policies that were written, and then some council approvals on some changes that were made over the years, and we're consolidating all this now into one document that we can pass out to the customer if they have any questions or want to know what the processes are from start to finish of getting power, if they have issues with some problems with their power. You know, times have changed. I mean, some of these things were written back in 1983, 95. We're just trying to get modernized with the way we do businesses, how we handle the processes. And I think we've done a fairly good job of recognizing all that and moving forward with these changes. And then one of the biggest issues we had was write-offs. I think I told you at the last council meeting, a few years ago, it was right at $600,000 each year. Last year, we were at a quarter million. David Melton's done a great job of reducing our losses in non-pays, but we have now hit a wall. Unless we change some of these rules, that's about as good as we're going to get it. That's one of the biggest considerations from my chair, that I see that we need to change some of these rules. Mr. Carter, I cannot see that.
Okay. Jill, you want to come up here a minute? You want me to go down each line, or? What do you feel comfortable with, Mr. Bryant? We're going, it's your, it's your presentation.
It's just go down each line. That way I can keep track of what I'm talking about. Let's go with credit check. Currently, it's arbitrary. If someone walks in, we can either charge them nothing or up to $100. Under the new plan, it's going to be a soft credit check, and it'll come back either good credit, fair credit, bad credit, and the deposit will be adjusted accordingly, $100, $200, $300 on those. And again, that's going to cut out on our losses, our non-pay at the end of the year. Right now, if you get cut off for non-pay, we'll increase your deposit $100 up to two times your history on that account. Now, we're going to go ahead and up it $100 up to two and a half times what your current history on the account. But now, this doesn't reduce your base deposit. You'll have your deposit, and each time you get cut off for non-pay, we're going to up your deposit $100 to be applied to your bill, up to two and a half times a normal bill. Right now, if you have 12 months of good history of paying your bill, we refund your deposit. That's not very good business practices. So now, we will keep your deposit until you close out the account and then refund it at that time. Promissory notes, I think a bunch of our customers have got condition that they can just call us, sign a promissory note, and we're going to come out and cut you back on if you promise to be in the office in 24 hours to pay your bill. That would go away. Now, you have to pay it online, over the phone, get reconnected. Routine extensions, used to you can come in, apply for an extension for about any reason, and we would grant you up to five days to come in and take care of the account without any fees. Now, we're proposing you can get a temporary or medical extensions. You can extend that out to five days without penalty, but it has, you have to be eligible for that. You have to have a doctor's statement saying you're disabled or you have health issues to make such arrangements on that. And I don't, we do it, customers may suspend service. We shorten, or we just put a time limit on it to 120 days. There's no benefit one way or the other to the customer, I don't think, but for us, it helps and edit. If we get an account that's using power and then they leave town on business for 60, 90 days, it keeps spitting it out and edit every month. So we have to go out and research it, why does this account not have any usage on it? So it's more of a benefit to us, but it's available to people who are leaving town and don't want to pay some of the fees associated with having an active meter. The cutoff dates, used to, I think it was 21 days, plus you could get seven more if you came in and made arrangements, which would put you really owing us for two months of power. And a lot of times, these customers eventually just move off, and we'd be stuck with that loss. We shortened that to 14 days, and then after the due date, seven days before we cut it off. So we shortened it seven days. We're not going to send out shut-off notices anymore through the mail. You'll either be notified by email or text, if that's the way you want to receive it. Mailing out shut-off notices is very expensive. I think last year, with the billing, stamps, paper, and I think around about $48,000 that we spent in just mailing out shut-off notices. No meter policy change. Here, in the next few months, we'll probably come back maybe before then with that opt-out letter, or some customers do not want these smart meters for various reasons. We hope the letter will satisfy their concerns, and we're going to give them a couple of options on how we can move the meter off of their house, and maybe that'll satisfy them. If not, it could get very expensive on their part, having to pay the difference between electronic read and then someone coming out and actually reading the old-style mechanical meters. I mean, that's going to be costly.
Yeah, Mr. Bray, one question. Where are we on electronic reading of red meters in the city of North Little Rock?
I'm sorry?
Where, where are we? What percentage of the households of our customers have got?
The residential, we should be winding that up late July, mid-August. Every residential customer, except for those few that have opted out, will have digital or electronic meters on them.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am?
Since you, excuse me, since you're no longer going to be sending out through the mail, the shut-off notices, and you said by text and email, so how are we going to get the word out to the customers, your new, what are you going to be doing, your new policies and stuff?
Alright, the new, we're hoping to get the prepay eventually, and probably in the next year. A customer will come in, put up $200, $200 worth of kilowatt-hours or something to that effect, and we've got different online mechan, Jill, you want to speak to that? Customer here.
Okay, so how would we notify the customer that they would not be getting the shut-off notice? We will be phasing that in, and they will receive a shut-off notice with the notification that they will no longer get that. We do have the ability, all they have to do is sign up for the, my account online, and they would be able to be notified by text or email. Also, the bill serves as a notice, so they do know that it's due, and if they do not pay it by the due date, it is late or subject to disconnect.
The reason why I asked the question is that a lot of the, a lot of our elderly people here in the city may not have internet. So my question is how are we going to notify the people even of your changes, how many days they have to pay? How are they going to know about all of this?
We plan to do a mailing to our customers. We have a whole marketing plan to make sure that every customer knows the changes. We can even look at robo-calling the customer if they would like to be notified that way. We have all this technology available. We just aren't utilizing it. The shut-off notices is just a standard that was very expensive. They do receive a notice, and now we're sending out a second notice.
When does the changes go into effect?
Well, we've put a timeline up, and what we would like to do, once city council has approved the rules, we've got two phases. The first phase would be in approximately 45 days after council approval. Those would be deposit changes, end of promissory notes, extension changes, suspension changes, and then our claims process. In phase two, you would see the rate assignment, the mailed shut-off notices, and the meter choice policy, the payment due date, and then our weather rule go into effect. All of these phases and all of these things will be advertised and targeted to customers so that they would be able to see it either by mail, social media. In the lobby, we've installed video boards that will be rolling so they can constantly see what our messaging is. We, we've taken that into consideration because the last thing we want to do is make the customer more upset and our customer service to have to have more problems. So we want to try to head that off by being able to make sure we're proactive and get the message out there as the best that we can.
Where are you on AMI? So are y'all fully loaded on AMI now?
We're about 99%.
So y'all are disconnecting and reconnecting?
Yes.
Through AMI. I know you've had the meters, but now you're, you're doing that.
Right. We looked at the fees that would be associated with connect, or reconnection and after hour reconnection, but there's not been a study done, so there is room for adjusting those fees. It just hasn't, it's not in this legislation.
Okay, I got you. So, okay. And to, to her inquiry, I would think on the disconnect notice, yeah, do a robo-call. I mean, do a robo-call two days prior, and, you know, how you're getting ready, and that's, that's better than a disconnect notice.
Yeah. Currently, our technology that we have with my account sends out three notifications when the bill is available, a second notice reminding them, and then a final notice. That's way better than what we do now.
That's fine. And your write-off's going to go down too, by the way.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
I guess one of my concerns was with the robo-calls, is the scams that we've had, you know, previously with the electric department and everything to make sure, I don't know how we do that, but to ensure that they know that this is not a scam. I don't know how you do that, but, I mean, you would just, you would just would direct them to call the electric department or come, or make a payment, or where to go, not-
You can let James be the voice on that, I know.
Yes, there you go.
So they would opt into this. We wouldn't force any of these on anyone. They would, this would be their choice, that they'd like a call, a text, or an email.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Alright, I think one of the biggest policy changes with commercial accounts is we're not going to let, give them an opportunity to come in and pick out what rate they want to be on. Either we'll have history on the account to determine what assets we have to have in place to make that business run, or we'll take their load sheets, calculate their demand, and determine what type of equipment we need to put in place to serve them, and that is the rate that they will be on depending on their KW demand. Now, it seems like some consultants come in and look at their bills and determine, you know, hey, you're not really using that that much, so we can go down and get that changed to a different rate, save you some dollars. And, you know, we still have to have the equipment in place to serve them. It might not be but an hour a month, but we still have to have that equipment out there to serve them, and that's the rate they should be on.
Do you have the database that goes ahead and, and checks that on anniversary date anyway?
We do check some, but no, no, we don't do it yearly, no.
My wife can fix you up one.
Alderman Ross?
So the customer may choose their own rate. That's strictly commercial?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I should have put, or someone should have put that up there, but someone didn't. And then another change is the weather policy. We're going to go by the PSC rules on that. If you're an elderly person, 65 or older, or handicapped, and you have, we have the documentation, which is a form you can pick up, or go online and get, fill it out, or have a doctor's statement. If it gets above 96, we're not going to cut you off, and then if it's below 32, we don't cut anyone off.
How do y'all monitor that?
Poorly, right now, but we're going to-
I mean, with the, with the fluctuations in the temperature, how do you monitor that?
It's temperature.
They monitor it every day. They look at it at night before they leave to know who will be on there, and then it's monitored during the day as soon as they come in, because scheduled cutoffs happen before 10:00 AM. So if it looks like that the temperature's going to be higher, too high, they, they postpone them.
We have two, two weather services that we subscribe to. I don't guess we subscribe, but we look at every day, especially in the summer months, monitor that.
Okay. Alright, anybody, okay, okay, anything else?
Any other questions?
No, I was going to say, anybody else?
Yeah.
Okay.
That it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bray. Okay, and because of the number of alderpersons here tonight, we're going to hold that piece of legislation until next council meeting. Isn't that correct, Kirk Whitby?
Yes. So we're not going to call it, we're just going to hold it.
Okay.
Okay. That's held.
Now, we have-
Citizen public comment. You have Mr. Ard, and then there was another gentleman, but he may have changed his mind after he spoke with Mr. Wadley.
Mr. Ard, this is, you're here to comment on O-1749?
Tell me which one it is, what's it pertaining to, because I got two of them.
That has to do with-
Car lot.
A car sale, allowing a car sale-
Hey, I know, I know what I'm saying. That is a residential neighbor- That is a residential neighborhood, and I don't, I've had two people ask me what was going on, and they said they did not want a car dealership or lot in that area. Now, I'll be honest, I don't live there, but if it's like East Broadway, it could be just people hanging out there all the time. Since it's residential, the two people that talked to me would like to keep it that way because you know the rules. Nobody wants to go down here and gripe. They try to get somebody else to do it for them. But they had a just complaint, so I'm letting you know that apparently several neighbors do not want it. And I don't know if anyone's called the alderman like I asked them to. I don't know if they went to any of the hearing or hearings or anything. I'm just doing what I told two people I would do for them. Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Ard, while you're there, you're next on the list to speak on...
Ice machine.
O-1750. I believe that concerns a self-serve ice vending unit.
I have no quarrels with the ice machine going in, but the way I think he's going to put it, and where I understand he's going to put it, what's it going to do to the property if they try to expand it or put another business on there and maybe traffic flow? So I think he ought to, or whoever it is, ought to redesign how he's going to set that ice machine up. It's right there on MacArthur, if I'm not mistaken. And if he puts it in the wrong spot, they can't do anything else with that property easy. That's my concern. Maybe I could get him to redesign his plans and everything. And Mr. Mayor, since I did not just go behind him, can I make one comment about the electrical?
Is this concerning the ice vending, you know, that's what you're in front of the council?
Yeah. What he, it would be nice to do robo-calls. Southwestern Bell does them. And some people do not have Internet, some people do not have anything on their phone. And if you've got a phone number for them, it would be a great help. Thank you very much.
Okay. Unfinished business, O-1742, Mayor Smith.
Wait a minute. I have a question. Under public comment signing sheets, you've got the Headliner Investment Groups here to speak on R-17110. Is that...
The one that was going to talk to Tom. It was on a...
They want to speak when we...
Well...
That's part of the consent agenda.
He wanted to talk to Tom, and my understanding is that there might have been a mistake on which lot it was, but I'm not sure. So when we call it, Mr. Wadley hopefully will answer that question.
When we, well, it's part of the consent agenda. No, it's not. It's not. I'm sorry. My fault. Okay.
The gentleman left, so I'm thinking maybe they worked it out.
Okay.
Okay. So, O-1742?
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment about the O-1742. Okay. The mayor met with the neighbors of the Meadow Park Neighborhood Association, and he explained to them regarding this legislation. And one of the things that he mentioned to them was that if and when this company operates during their extended hours, for them to call 911, and then an officer will go out to the site, and this will verify, you know, that they are operating. And then the mayor will contact the CEO or the person over the plant. He will get with them to discuss the issues from the neighbors. So I'll vote for it.
One alderwoman, Robinson, referenced that she wanted what Mayor Smith had told the group and included in the minutes, so that will be included. I still need to read it a third time?
So please call it, it's been read twice.
Ordinance reclassifying certain property located at 6801 Highway 70 in the city of North Little Rock from C-3 to I-3, classification amending ordinance 7697 of the city of North Little Rock, adopting an amended land use plan for the subject property, third and final reading.
Anybody in discussion on the question?
Need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, now, Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
You don't have enough to vote an emergency clause? I would suggest to the council to hold the matter now till the next meeting for consideration on the emergency clause.
Let it be said, let it be done, then.
Okay. O-1747 was already held. O-1749, Alderman Harris.
Placed on the third reading or something like that?
I will read it a second time this time, so...
Yeah, second time.
Okay. An ordinance granting a special use to allow car sales lot in a C-3 zone for property located at 1201 Parkway Drive in the city of North Little Rock, second reading. And then you can hold it.
Okay, and because of the number of city councils tonight, we can only read it, and we'll have to hold it till the next council meeting.
Yeah, we'll hold it till the next council meeting. Mr. Fraser's here if he wants to talk, but I advised him that there might be more council members here on the final reading.
Third reading.
You know, but it's up on the third reading, so it's up to him. So, anyway.
Is this on, I'm sorry, is this on O-1749?
Yes. It was just read a second time.
We'll have to hold that one.
It was only read one time at the previous meeting.
We can only read that once.
It was read at once today. So it's, next meeting will be the third reading.
Okay.
It was read one time at the last meeting. It's read a second time today.
In my notes, I have that we suspended and moved to the second reading last meeting.
We didn't actually vote on it.
Okay.
We talked about it. We voted, well, we voted...
Yeah, I was just going to let it go through the process of three readings.
Let me clarify that.
Okay, well, and if Alderman Harris, it's his legislation to call for a vote. If he doesn't want to call for a vote right now, that's up to him.
Yeah.
So it's, doesn't matter.
We didn't actually read it. That was the part that didn't happen.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so next one, O-1750, Alderman Harris.
I guess we're going to hold that.
Okay. Consent items. Alderman, Mayor Height.
Consent agenda?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Does anybody on the consent agenda, do I have any, anybody wants to pull one, or...
104 and 105.
104 and 105. 104, okay, so that's, do I have a motion then to, oh, no, I just called for a voice vote on the consent agenda on 17103 and 17106. All four, all support it by saying yea.
Yea.
Yea. Nays, no nays, so yays have it. R-17104, please, please read that one.
Resolution transferring property to be used for the development of the downtown plaza from the Public Building Authority to the city.
Have any questions?
Move for adoption, and we have an amendment to attach, is why we called it. Not an amendment, we have an exhibit to attach, I'm sorry.
But it'll take an amendment. Somebody will have to move to amend.
So you have a motion to adopt in a second. Now you need a motion to amend in a second.
Motion to amend.
Second.
So we'd need to, this was distributed with special call. It's an Exhibit A to R-17104. There's a brief description of the property plus a map.
Okay. So on the motion to amend...
Okay, Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Move for adoption with the amendment.
Second.
On the motion to amend, Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R-17105, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
Resolution authorizing the transfer of title to certain real property located in the downtown area of North Little Rock from the Public Building Authority to the Downtown Development Board.
Do we have an amendment?
Yes, we have an exhibit to attach to that also that was in the...
Motion to amend.
Second.
The amendment would be the one that was sent out with special call, Exhibit A to R-17105, which lists three parcels with an associated map indicating properties to be moved to the development board.
Okay. Motion made and seconded.
On the motion to amend, Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes the consent agenda.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Oh, move to adopt as amended.
Oh, yeah, move to adopt as amended.
Second.
On the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Okay. Now, regular agenda, R-17107, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
Resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 4515 Orange Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning such structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Okay. Do I call a public hearing before the, before the motion or after the motion?
You'll ask for a motion, then call the public hearing.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call for a public hearing on R-17107, 4515 Orange Street. No one here to speak on R-17, then I'll adjourn the public hearing. On the question.
Okay. Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R-17108, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
Resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 1506 North Vine Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning such structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Public hearing on R-17108, 1506 North Vine Street. Anyone here to speak for or against that? Close the public hearing. On the question.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R-17109, Mayor Smith?
Please call that one.
Resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 801 Curtis Sykes Drive, also known as 1506 North Vine Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning such structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Public hearing on R-17109, 801 Curtis Sykes Drive, also known as 1506 North Vine Street. Anyone here to speak on, for, or against? If there's been no one, I'll close the public hearing. On the question.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R-17110, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
Resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with Plaski County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Public hearing on R-17110.
And this is the one that the young man had signed up to speak on, that Mr. Wadley spoke with him?
Is he here?
He had the address that he was going to talk to you about, the young man in the hat?
He realized that this is correct.
Okay. Okay.
Anyone here?
He's not here, so press on.
Close the public hearing on R-17110. On the question.
Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Ordinances, O-1752, Alderman, Witcher, and Height?
Please call it.
An ordinance approving a waiver request for requirements of street trees for certain real property located at 4331 East 43rd Street in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
We're going to hold that one.
O-1753, Alderman Ross and White?
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a special use to allow a second residence in an R2 zone for property located at 206 East G Avenue in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
We're going to need to hold that also.
Can I ask a question on that one? Is the request for the second property, is that going to be a rental property?
Yes.
The applicant does not have a business license with him for rental property, so we need him to get that taken.
They haven't even started on this property because they wanted to make sure that they could get this legislation through. First, I'll make sure that they know that.
Okay. And I believe Alderman Robinson had a rental property comment.
Yeah, I do. We do have rental landlords in the city for rental properties, and they're operating without a business license. And, you know, I don't know how to go about finding out who they are, but they do need a business license in order to operate because after all, it is a business that they're doing. Now, thinking about this particular legislation, I don't know, you know how when items come before us from planning and we have these lists of things that they have to have, you know? And I just think that we ought to put something in place where they have to have a business license, you know, in order to operate here in the city. And what we're charging, the fee, $35 or $40, and some folks are getting $950 a month, you know, for rent. We just need to look at that, Mr. City Attorney. We need to look at that. And I think we're missing out.
Does that conclude the agenda? Okay, we've got two people that have signed up to speak during the public comment section, and one of them is John Santoro.
Pass.
Pass. Okay. The other one is James Ard. I bet he didn't pass.
You'll read it to me? I will, I will. Want to read it to me?
No, I'm not reading anything. I can't see that far.
That's okay. People at home...
What's his shirt say?
Do I?
Okay.
You want to read it?
No, I don't know. You go ahead and read it.
Okay. People at home, the city needs help. I'm not far increasing a sales tax, to be honest with you. But basically, you've got two choices. Let's let everybody help, or let's get ready for a garbage fee. Now, the council member can tell you what they want to, but I can assure you, if the sales tax does not pass, get ready for a garbage fee between $15 and $35. Charlie, would you agree with that?
Let's be optimistic, Mr. Ard.
Huh?
Be optimistic.
Okay. Also, excuse me. Jay Hook Wicker has not got with me when they tried to rip me off for $60. I don't think they ought to be a city wrecker. Somebody needs to do something. And hi, Victoria Lee, have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Ard. Do I have any council members that want, you've already made your comment, is that right?
I just remind you, the Fourth of July is coming up, and I don't know if Chief Davis is here.
He's out there.
If he would just like to remind everyone that fireworks are illegal in the city of North Little Rock.
Fireworks are illegal in North Little Rock. You cannot do them. You have to go outside the city limits. You buy them outside the city limits. We don't sell them in the city limits, so stay out of the city limits and please. I mean, the danger associated with it, there's a lot of veterans that are affected by it, a lot of elderly people, a lot of animals, so it's best just not to do it. Then there's also the fire danger as well. So please do not dispose of fireworks in North Little Rock.
Thank you, Chief.
Mayor, tell them about the garbage you picked up.
Anybody else? Any other aldermen?
Garbage being a little one of them, right?
Come on, make a comment there. Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On the motion to adjourn, Ross?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.